What's that?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for July 5th, 2023 at 6:31 PM. And we do have a quorum. First order business is election of officers, chairman and vice chair. Are any nominations?
I, I'd like to nominate Bob Hand to be chairman of the select board for at least another year.
Thank you, Mike.
Second thought.
Thank you. Alex, thanks. Guess we're doing okay. All right. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Mike, I.
Heather, I.
Bye bye. Nominations for vice chair.
I nominate you.
I second that. Do you accept?
I'll accept.
Right. Sandra has accepted her nomination for vice chairman. Any discussion? Nothing? All right. All those in favor, Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, oh, I forgot to introduce Heather, our newest select board member here. Sorry.
Hello, Heather. Pleased to meet you. I know, I know your daughter very, very well. Yeah.
I saw you've been doing some work up front.
Yes.
Yes.
There's still a lot left to be done, but this year has not been. Yeah.
My, my grass is up to my knee.
All right, moving on to old business, municipal property usage policy ordinance discussion. I know we were looking at some other towns, try to pull that together.
So I was under, it was my understanding that Azalea was going to see if she could locate some from some other towns. She hasn't been able to attend the meetings and I, I haven't. She hasn't been able to respond to my emails, so. I don't ever want to step on anybody's toes, but if the rest of the board feels okay with it, I would just assume that I'll move forward with contact. I just didn't want to be calling towns. If she was calling, it just wouldn't look professional. But that I will actually reach out to some other towns. My thought is, is find some towns that have an ordinance in place and ask them, how's it working for you? What do you wish you'd done differently? Um, and, and use that as a template, so. I'll.
I'd like to comment on that if I could.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, I agree. Sandra, if you're, you're willing to do that, you should, but I do believe that we need to make sure that Azalea at least knows that we're not asking her to do that anymore. She may already have it done and we don't know about it. So I, I do believe we need to communicate with Azalea before we make a final decision in that regard.
I don't know if she's not getting my emails or maybe somebody else could.
Yeah, I'll try to get in touch with her as well. I did see your email to the board about it, so.
Yeah.
Follow up with Azalea, see what's going on. See if she's done some, I'll work on that side.
But, um, so I, I'll pull that together. There've been some community members who have done some work and, and done some research and, and given me some notes. I think that's really useful, so kind of put together what we have and bring it to the next meeting if it's okay to put that on the agenda.
Yep.
And then, um, as a board, we can look at the pieces and.
Right, we had a, we had a, a generalized policy that we were kind of going from, as I recall, right?
So, yeah, I provided a generalized policy to him, which basically covered the basics of, it was the skeleton, so.
Yeah.
Curfews, you know, like the rec fields closed at 11 o'clock at night until six in the morning. Town sponsored events take priority over public use and at times maybe close because of a town sponsored event like a baseball game or a softball game. Outside of that, it was basically just the outline of, okay, now plug in what else, you know? It, it talked about the rec field, it talked about the municipal center grounds, it talked about Bessie Field. I mean, obviously we have other property in town that we don't really utilize. But it covered the, the most important ones, starting with curfew and
Probably no.
Take care of. Clean, clean up after yourself. Forget what else is in there. Yeah, I have a copy to save it. Can I email it out to you? I, I can email it out to you.
I, I think you handed it out once too.
But if I kind of gather everything together, um, and then have copies for everybody and to share.
Yeah.
With anybody who wants to comment or offer feedback and then maybe we can break it up and decide who does what from there. Is that? Mike, does that work for you?
Yep, it does. Thank you.
Yes, Viv?
Clear question, so it will or will not be on the agenda in the next meeting?
It will.
Okay, thank you.
All right. New business, the consent agenda. Good for a motion to approve the dispersment warrants, consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written. Is that the right wording?
Yes.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Cam.
Just so you know, payroll or accounts payable warrant two, that's got, uh, that's as high as it is because it has paving, part of the progress paving building in there too. Okay, you can see it from the table.
Say that again, please. Say that again, please, Cam.
There was an invoice in there for some of the East Buckfield road paving.
Oh, okay. Which looks nice, by the way.
Yeah. Got to do a bear ponder.
Lot easier to drive. Yeah.
All right. Yes, Penny?
All, all of this? Is this the end of the year as of June or is some of this?
So technically, payroll warrant one and accounts payable warrant two include invoices from the prior year, which are segregated and set aside for the auditor to take off of last year's numbers.
Okay, so it was starting back at number one?
No. The way trio works is once you hit, once you do year end, that's the way it does it. And then when you, when you go and reconcile everything, you deduct the invoices from last year off of this year and figure out last year's numbers and trust me, I know. So, yeah, I mean, it's, the next warrant will be warrant free. It's not going to reset it.
All right, yeah, and the total on that's $254,843.37. All those in favor, Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
That's why it's there.
I made a motion, I'm sorry.
I did.
Sandra, who made the second?
I did.
Everybody voting, yeah?
Yes, perfect, thank you. You bet. Uh, number two on your new business, approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 Select Board meeting. Everybody have a chance to review that? I didn't see anything that gonna cover the cable franchises later, right? I didn't have it on me. I sent it to, yeah, all right.
Yeah. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2023 Select Board meeting.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Review and amend policy on treasurer's dispersment warrants for employee wages benefits.
So as you recall, in November, we instituted a policy that allowed us to do payroll weekly as long as one of you comes in and reviews it and signs off on it. Uh, same with state fees, so whatever we collect for the BMB, we have to do weekly reports. Obviously, we have two meetings a month. So what you have in your packet is a draft of the updated version, which would, which I'm asking you to vote on, which includes Heather's name. It, it has the changes and then it just says at the bottom that it's being amended. So it's same policy, we're just, we have to review it every year. It hasn't been a year yet, but since it's a new board, it would make sense to do it now, so in July of next year, we can do the same thing.
So, so there are no changes, you're saying? You're not changing anything, except adding Heather's name to it?
Right, um, I updated the who's currently on the board and then we just note, noticed that it was, or noted that it was amended today, if you pass it.
Okay.
And just for clarification, because somebody asked me this question earlier. There were three policies, my understanding, and I may not be using their correct language, but one for employee wages and benefits, one for state fees and the other one for school
Yeah.
funds. We will get to the school funds piece if we need it, but these are the two that we need to have.
I, as far as the school, I, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, we pay it once a month and we have two meetings a month.
Okay.
And the school's never given me an issue if I pay it on the first meeting of the month or the second. So that was not as necessary as weekly payroll and, like I said, we do the state fees weekly and monthly, so sometimes, you know, it's little checks have to go.
We'll update these to let the other lapse because we don't need it anymore.
We don't, we never, we never put it in place.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about it, so these two, and if we ever did, then we can revisit that.
If there was one in place prior to me taking over, it was never renewed anyway, so it automatically would have.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll hand these one at a time. We'll do the treasurer's dispersment warrant, apparently wages and benefits first.
So I make a motion that we amend the policy on treasurer's dispersment warrants for employee wages and benefits to in with the amendment being change updating of the names of the members of the school board, I mean, the select board.
Yeah.
It's more.
Actually, it is written, yeah.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Yes?
Um, since this is going in as a policy not to bust chops or anything, but shouldn't this be with legal names of the members? Like Robert, not while. Does it matter? And Michael not like if that's his legal name. I'm not trying to bust chops, but it's in the policy.
I can go make the edits.
Sorry. Yeah, so we'll
Are you signing?
We'll make that change and just.
Sign that wrong?
By Robert, yes, yeah.
Just to be, you know, we want to talk about your questions.
With that change? Do you want to change?
I didn't necessarily, it just, my motion was to amend the document to include the names of the current select, so.
Okay. Should we make a correction on that? We're, yeah, I think we're good.
I got them on my computer, so I'll just make the changes and then I can decide.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Thank you. And now the state fees collection policy.
So I'd like to make a motion that we update the policy on treasurer's dispersment warrants for state fees collected by the municipality to reflect the names of the current members of the select board.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll correct the names of that one too, yeah. All in favor, Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Heather, I.
Thank you. All right. Now, Buckfield alcohol drug testing procedures policy. Copy here. Which looks a little dated, but.
It's technically paper.
What I, from what I understand, we, we contract this out, right? This is just kind of, so we use. So.
So I, I asked for this to be on the agenda. And did somebody else ask for it to be on the agenda too?
I think so.
Okay. Um. So as we go ahead and move forward and review policies, we as a board, we worked on the policies for, help me with the.
Personnel policy handbook.
The personnel policy handbook. And in the personnel policy handbook, there is a section or a line that includes, um, that references alcohol and drug policy and testing.
Yeah.
Um. So then this is the policy that the town has and clearly, given the fact that this was typed on a typewriter and filled in, um, that perhaps this warrants review to see if it is as up to date as it from 95 should be. So I read this and then I went online because in this first paragraph, it refers to, um, that we will comply with 49 CFR point part 382 and other pertinent federal laws. So I did not go through and compare item for item. But my understanding is essentially this is a typewritten Buckfield version of 49 CFR part 382, which is federal policy on testing. My one thought I had is that if we went back to the personnel policy handbook and included the line in there that Buckfield will follow um, or will comply with 49 CFR part 382 and other pertinent federal laws. And that way, as the federal government makes changes or updates, we won't have to worry that ours is not, and um, it is my understanding, and I actually asked a few drivers with the CDL license and that part of having your CDL is knowing at least the, the basics of necessary testing. So for anybody with a CDL, none of this should be new or a surprise or anything that we would have to. But those were just some of my thoughts.
So if we included that in the policy manual, would we even need? This is a separate?
Yeah, we would need a policy.
Have to carry it separately.
It's law.
All right. Yeah, this was settled besides in 1295.
It was, but if you look at it, it was drafted by MMA.
Wow.
So it was a generic MMA policy, just like the generic
Yeah.
Policies that we just amended for us.
Did they have a current policy that's?
I couldn't find one.
Uh, so this is still what they use?
I don't know if it's still what they use, but I couldn't find a more up to date version. They didn't even have a sample policy for alcohol and drug testing. The only reason I say the policy is required is because in the 60-page manual I got from Northern Light Health, it says that a policy is required.
But does can the policy just be that the town of Buckfield will comply with 49 CFR part 382 and other pertinent federal laws?
It says, the DOT agencies and USCG require employers to have written policies for their DOT testing programs. At a minimum, these policies must contain specific information, information required by the appropriate DOT agency or USCG. Your policies must clearly delineate between the items and actions which are required by DOT and which are required by the company or employer. Here is a listing of DOT agency in USCG, so I got a page of items from 49 CFR part 382 dot 601B.
Okay.
Says the identity of the person designated by the employer to answer driver questions about the materials. This policy says the town manager. The categories of drivers for subjects and provisions of this part, basically anybody with a CDL, which is our public works. Specific information concerning driver conduct that is prohibited by part 382. Can't tell you right off the top of my head what it says. With that said, like you said, we use Northern Light Health, we do pre-employment testing, we do, our, our drivers are in random pool testing, so if they get called, they have to go and do a test. Um, and then if there's ever an accident, we would send them and require that they take a drone test, so we're in compliance with the law, with the law and we're still in compliance with our policy, so. Yeah, it's dated. But I think it's pretty, it's pretty much, it's, it's still the same as what it should be.
Okay.
Unless somebody can challenge that and tell me something different. Yeah, right here, prohibited conduct, so I mean, our policy complies with, with that. Procedures that will be used to test for the presence of alcohol and controlled substances, that's in here.
Can you say that again? Karen, can, can you talk about just the air, air conditioner?
I don't even remember what I said. I said that our policy, I said that our no, I said our policy includes prohibited conduct, which is on this list of policy requirements.
Page five.
I'm just going down a list of I'm just going down a list out of this manual that says what has to be in the policy, which is in our policy, so. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah. I have, so this policy came from MMA and this is still what they would continue to.
Correct, and any amendments that they make to this, uh, what was it, 49 CFR 382? Would still, this policy would still relate to that.
So do we know? If, if they have this in some kind of.
Do you want me to retype it?
No, that's what I'm trying to avoid. But, um.
It seems like a place you could cut and paste from somewhere, but.
No, good, this is.
I, I mean, I can, I can reach out to MMA and see if they have a more up to date one than the 95 version and, and see what they say. They do, I'll take a look at it compared to what we already have and there's anything that sticks out, I can bring it back to you at the next meeting or.
Would you, is that something I can do instead of you?
Um. I'll get the policy and then if they send it to me, I'll shoot it off to you so you can review it, compare it side by side.
That'd be great.
Yes, David?
So my question would be, is referencing MMA legal number 309 with that date on the very last sentence, including the very last line, I probably looked that up and I can't, here we go. And I would advise if you do update this signature straight at it, because it's not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a lot of signatures.
So MMA just updated their website too, we can't find any.
Maybe that, maybe that's for sure.
People already complained about the legal side of it.
So you'll get the new copy and then you'll just compare them and then if there is any differences, we'll talk about it next time to see if we.
Thank you.
MM, and you can see.
This is a good question.
We should open right in.
Heather.
All right. Yes, Viv?
Does the 49 CFR part 382 apply to all town employees? Or is there a separate alcohol and drug testing if you don't own a CDL license? Or do we not test any employee that doesn't have a CDL license?
Just trying to remember the policy manual on that.
We do not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
We do not, as my understanding is that we do not have a policy and has never been past practice of the town to do any testing for any employee other than what is required by federal law for people with a CDL.
Can run into some serious legal issues if you test the wrong person without the right, so the town of Buckfield only tests those that have a CDL and work in a CDL position.
And that has always been.
As required. Yeah. All right. We have a plan on that. Fantastic.
Yes.
Committee appointments. Looking for a motion on Belinda Kleberger for the library committee?
I make that, I make, I make the motion that we appoint Belinda Kleberger to the library committee for three years.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, Bob, I.
My guy.
Heather, I.
Bye.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we appoint Lawrence Jordan to the library committee for a three-year term.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, Bob, I.
Mike, I.
Heather, I.
I.
I missed who made the motion.
I did, Mike Iverson. And now I make a motion that we appoint Dick Piper to the planning board for a three-year term.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Heather, if you want to hold up too.
Sorry, please.
All those in favor?
Mike, I.
Heather, I.
I have to split vote on that, this is the first time we've ever had a tie vote.
Well, Zillias is here.
I, I have, no, I did. I guess I have a couple of questions for Mr. Piper and I was hoping he'd be here tonight.
So maybe we should get in touch with him and from this next meeting.
I don't feel comfortable voting without having talked to him.
Okay.
That's, that's.
And I make a motion, we put this appointment off until the next meeting.
So, any discussion, Tina?
There is a, to me, maybe. There is a, to me, maybe he's in Zoom call or something, you know?
So, so you're. Technically, you just had a vote, and it was two to. There was.
Yeah, two yay, two.
No, two abstains, I guess.
Yeah.
So. And I could be wrong. You've, you've done this longer than me.
Does he have to read?
And abstaining is basically like, you, you're, you're not even here. So really, it would be.
That's alright.
Two to all vote, so.
So that would be a.
It would be a pass.
It would be a pass. Yeah. So he passes with those two votes. Yep.
Well, you never called for any no's and. You only called for, well, you called for a vote. Like, so I guess, so, yeah, I guess what I'm asking you is, what's the count?
Okay, so we had two yays. Were we abstaining? Did you want to abstain or you?
I'm, I'm going to abstain because.
I will as well. So that, that would pass, that guess.
So that means Mr. Piper is appointed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Quick question.
Yes, Ben.
Under, I'm not sure if you're using Robert's Rules of Order or some other kind of designated board. Agreed it. But in the past. You, if you voted. Uh. Yet, he, he. If you voted no on an item, you can bring it up the next meeting. Um, and then there's also, if you're using Robert's Rules of Order technically. Yeah. There's a clause in here about not using extensions when there really knows.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
So, I have a question. When you abstain, you have to have a reason for it, not to abstain? Let's try it. That's.
Someone could ask. That's what the. If some, if one of the board asked, you, you have to respond in some fashion.
I know.
I'm not sure about extensions or if that's a no. I'd have to look up my Robert's Rules of Order for that.
Sure.
Yes.
So I think. Those of us that are here are a little confused because in the past. There's been everything from the boards requiring applicants to come in person. And then there's also been. The policy agreement made with a floor of how these votes would occur. And then there has been, if you do abstain, you have to have a reason. You can't just. Abstain. Um. Have to give a reason. I clearly heard Sander say. I have questions that I need to answer, have, be answered by Mr. Piper before I can vote. So that makes sense. Um.
My reasoning would be similar. Yeah, I, I'd like to chat him up a little.
And then the question of how does the board handle, because it came up and it was a big blow up on the board actually at the time of. Bringing some, bringing the motion back. Up on the table, either in the current meeting or the next meeting. And you either had, had, had voted. Be somebody who voted yes or somebody that voted no, and I can't remember what that was. If you vote no, then you can never bring it back to the meeting board.
Right.
Okay, but you didn't vote no.
Correct.
You abstained, so you can bring it back to the table. So if you have only, sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
If you have only two out of a five-person board voting yes, how is that a majority vote? It's not a war, it's not a war.
That's a good point.
It is because they chose to abstain and not vote. So it's like they.
We disqualified ourselves.
Basically means that.
You're not gonna vote. But then you only have two. Again, suddenly you have two. Voting. And the other two said they're not gonna vote at all, but you only have two voting yes out of a five-person war. How is it?
I, I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
So on top of that, I'd have to look at, I don't know, this. What they're talking about as far as how these meetings are run policy, which doesn't seem to exist anymore anywhere on any of our servers or on our website. Is it a policy or an ordinance? Because if it's a policy, the board has the authority.
They are.
Appointments, but we don't have, we're talking about how the meetings are handled on extensions and all this. That's why I'm trying to find the policy that she's referencing.
No, I'm saying. The, the, the blackboard has always had the right to formulate their own bylaws. This is the beginning of the year and a good example of why they board may. Want to settle these types of bylaws now. Going forward into a new year. Otherwise, you're confused.
Right.
That's all. And it doesn't have to happen in my. But I agree with. Tina, I don't think that's.
Right.
It's illegal.
Yeah.
So minimally, somebody could put a motion back on the floor and say, I'd like to. You know, rescind my vote or table this since the next meeting or something.
Right. Yes, Vinnie?
This for the record, page one of two, appointing a progress of a completed application. The board of selectmen at a meeting duly called shall consider said application and decide by majority vote. Whether or not to appoint the applicant. Applicant shall not be subject to an interview by the board of selection unless the board. At its discretion, be most necessary. In the event the board elects to interview the applicant. The town manager shall inform the applicant at least seven days prior to the interview day. To determine by the board of selection. Hope that helps.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's our policy.
Well. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh. Um, I've been wondering if we shouldn't just table this to the next meeting and then it's, let's, let's make sure we get all of our. Ps and Qs in a row here.
I think that makes sense.
That's the conundrum you're in, though.
Yeah.
You've already called for a vote.
We called for a vote.
You have two yeses. Somebody needs to vote no in order to bring this up at the next meeting.
I vote no. Can I vote no?
So, can we send votes?
And the guesses can put it on the next agenda. We've been.
The yeses or the no's that can bring it up on the next agenda?
No's never.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so we'll stick with the two yeses and you guys can bring it back up, but. Right. It's not a majority, so.
Send a motion.
Can we invite?
They already called for a vote.
Right.
Alright, so two yeses. One no. Now, Mike, can you make a motion?
Well, no.
We don't have.
It's, it's, so. So since you voted yes in the first place, it's two yeses, there's two extensions, it doesn't pass. You or Mike can bring it up at the next meeting.
Or request right now and inter, and have him here.
That's what I think we should do.
But you need to make. Now you can make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion to have. Invite. Richard Piper to the next meeting to be interviewed before we. Vote from.
The seven days.
With seven days.
Well, have, what, our next meeting is for two week, two weeks now, so, yeah.
Two weeks from yesterday, no?
Yes.
Yep.
Good job, Mike. Good.
Thank you for the help, everybody.
Who's second in them?
That's, I second that motion. I guess I'm the only one that can, isn't that right? But.
Yeah.
Heather and I, we're the only people that could vote on that.
Right. Alright, any, so we'll call for a vote. Right? I can still vote on that, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can vote out. It's not the actual item. Right.
Bye-bye.
Mike, I.
They all leave them alone.
Alright, and we. We did have some other business to discuss. If we've Sander had some.
Um. Just, just a couple things, um. It's my understanding that we have been trying to coordinate. A meeting. Um. With Sumner about solid waste. And. That Cameron has gone. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So, uh, I did chat with Kelly today.
Oh, fantastic.
And, uh. I'm gonna try to organize that as soon as I can, uh, but they've got some things going on right now.
Sumner has a little.
It's a. They vote in August, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I saw on their website. Their town meetings in August.
Yeah.
What in August?
Their town meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um.
Is this a problem for us if this doesn't get done in the near future?
There was no big changes on that contract, as I recall, was there? I mean, it's still the, it's like seventy thirty, something like that, sixty-five, so.
For, for the. For the original agreement. Um, which at the last solid waste meeting, you all voted to extend the agreement until the new agreement is, um. In place. We voted on the. Um. We voted on a warrant article to approve the new agreement. We have to wait till Sumner goes to their town meeting and votes on it. They have a copy of the same. Agreement that's wrote, so we're waiting on them until they have their vote. If it fails. The vote that you guys, that, that, the solid waste committee had to. Continue with that agreement until the new agreement's in place would still be in effect. I don't anticipate that it'll fail, but that's really the biggest item on there. I know we talked about. Changing the, the transfer station stickers to, you know, an annual for. Every two-year, whatever. That's a discussion that needs to happen on that committee, and until they're ready to meet, there's really nothing that we. Buckfield can do about it until. A votes had, a discussions had of them, a decisions been made.
Yes, Ben.
Don't treat the messenger. There's a new board. So does the new board have to? Say who's gonna sit? On for Buckfield? On the solid waste committee? Don't you have to vote that in again?
Do we?
Yeah, I think it was three, three of them and.
So, so nobody attended. Nobody from the public attended that solid waste meeting?
Right.
And so. Currently, the three members of that committee from Buckfield are Bob, Mike, and Azilia. And until. They go to, until they. Make a different decision, that's in effect, it hasn't been for a full year yet, so.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay.
Actually, Bob's the dumb chair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's my nickname. Okay.
So we're, we're within all that. I just want to make sure that we're all set. If. This meeting doesn't happen.
Per the agreement, you're required to have two meetings a year. I can't remember the first one. The first one was after the new year, I thought.
Yeah.
Is, um. I can't remember. And. Yeah, so you've already had one. You have till the end of the year to have another one.
But just want to make sure we're all, um. We, on our. Um. List of things. In. Progress, the, am I correct that the, um. Cable franchise agreement is all set?
So right before this meeting, I forwarded you the updated copy that I received from the cable company, um. I told Bob you could bring it up in other business. It's the only thing that was removed was section thirteen, and they made an update to. Uh, twelve-one inspection of records for charter to maintain records for two years instead of one year, which is required by state law. So per the discussion we had at the last meeting, you asked to have. Section thirteen removed. That's been removed as requested, and. They made the legal change to twelve-one. So. I mean, if, if the board wanted to bring it up in other business and authorize me to sign it. You can. And it'll be done, and I can send it off tomorrow.
I guess I'm bringing it up.
Yeah. So we'll make a motion. Uh, that's. Yeah. By the town manager to go forward with the. Uh, chili use freedom. What else do you need in that motion?
Prove the. Town manager signed the cable franchise agreement? Yeah, alright, so.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Bob, I?
Mike, I.
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 Alright, hold on a second.
Sorry, Sander.
Really?
So I'm crossing this off my piece of.
That's fine. I'll send it to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Um. And I just wanted to verify that, um. Information from the library trust.
Yeah, I spoke with Jack, the town attorney. Last week. And he updated me. There was a couple of changes that needed to be made to the petition that the AG asked him to make. Doesn't anticipate any problems, but he needed to make changes and. Resubmit it, and that he would be in touch with me this week or next week to let me know. Um. But basically, he was on vacation for almost a month, so. That was kind of a little less. But. I have spoke to him. He's making the edits. He's gonna let me know. And once that's complete, I'll move on to the other one. With the time it's taken to do the library trust, I don't. I wasn't gonna bury him in trust stuff until one was completed.
It sounds like this is.
About to be wrapped up.
About to be wrapped up, and then we can move on to. Fantastic.
I would say, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
The old church on the hill. That's gonna sit here. Until we get more volunteers for this committee, so I would highly encourage the public, if you're interested. To. Possibly consider joining that committee. Corey, I see you on there. You might want to redo your application.
It's season.
Yeah, is my application up already?
Yeah, it expired on, uh, what, Friday?
Gotcha.
So I, I, I think the last. Thing I had for. That I wanted to bring up under other business. I don't think I have. The paper right in front of me. We had talked about, um. We, we took all of the committees and shared. That role of being a liaison to the different committees, and we saved a couple. For all the fun ones who are in. I just wanted. To make sure that we pass that list along and.
They were. So I didn't want.
I have it on last week's, uh, last meeting, and I have some reason for it to keep coming.
I apologize. But that maybe, um, as, as a board. Whether we do it tonight or put it on the agenda for the next time. But. I think it may be hard for our committees to make forward progress. Or to make. Or to make progress without having some specific goals. From us, so as a board, um. To come up with some specific questions or goals or action items to give to. The committees and, um. And what, what is our plan as select board members? In communicating. I think my original thought was that once a month. Each one of us would. Report back.
Yeah.
On the committees that we're. Assigned to. Um. Could we put that plan a little more firmly in place? Because it's just been out in the ethers for the last month. So what would other people like?
I got it right here.
Yeah, please.
He- Heather, you drew social services and appeals board.
You and Dan.
And the field board?
Sorry. Yeah, that's.
And along those lines, um, where are we at with, uh, community day? What is the expectation of the town? Because it is July.
And nobody's joining that community.
We have, oh.
You know, members. Sheriff Bowman and. Mark Fox right now.
Uh, we just voted them in though, right? What's that?
It's been a little while.
Has it? Alright.
Well, I mean, you need more two people to plan that.
Yeah. So. Who's, who's their selectmen liaison?
That may be me.
Do you wanna get together with them and?
People have a plan and if you need.
I'm sure that they don't, because they have not had a meeting, so I guess I would ask.
Okay, good, or ever, I don't know which one.
But what, what is our expectation? Has anybody heard from anybody in the community, what the, the community expects?
Have you, Sandra? Have you heard from anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. I mean, I've heard for the last two years that. People want Community Day to come back. Sure, I just, we haven't had the. Volunteers of the planning, well, COVID kind of racks everything up.
Yeah, catching up after that.
Yeah, once that kind of went away, it's like, there wasn't time to plan for last year, so. There's still money in their, in their accounts, it's just, we haven't done anything else.
Does Everett have something?
Yeah, Everett or Terry, I don't know.
I'm right here, you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, question, um. I believe last meeting, when you guys divvied up the committees to various members of the board. I thought you left out the library committee, am I correct?
It's last.
So, if, if so, I was wondering about the reasoning behind that, because I know the library director is a town employee. But yet. The committee is. Basically served on your behalf type deal.
So that one, I don't know how we missed that one, but.
So that would be an oversight.
Because I remember you guys discussing it last year too with the former board and divvying up stuff, and I remember them accepting the, uh, somebody took over. Being in communication with the library committee.
It looks like it would be really happy.
Yes.
Yeah, there we go.
I am happy that situation's been rectified.
Thank you, Everett.
Thank you.
Yay.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
I know the town is struggling to get volunteers. That's one thing. I think that there may be a way to kind of selectively use the committees that we have, if the board were to come up with. We want a Community Day, we don't want Community Day. If we do want a Community Day, this is what we. Would expect. We want a parade, we want another up and down field, we want art, we want it, or. Because of COVID, because of. Lack of volunteers, we just can't, went off this year, but I think the decision has to come. From the board with direction.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm prepared to say yes or no at this point, I'd rather discuss it with.
Typically, what's the date?
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Yeah, like Labor Day, yeah.
Yeah, so what is the date? For Labor Day this year, September 11th?
Mm-hmm, I see, and. And this is a, a very, very friendly reminder. Not to slam, not to make anybody look sad, not any of that stuff, but it's clearly. In the end, I'm a bit worried. That if there aren't committees, it is the board's responsibility.
September third. So what I'm hearing. So.
We slow.
The impression I get is that people would love to have a Community Day.
Yes.
Um. I think this is all just kind of prepped up.
Yeah.
On us, and it's July.
I feel like, um, at this point, it's. Unrealistic to have one as big as we have in the past. But maybe if we have one that's smaller, she's got a space on her. Sorry. I said it's kind of unrealistic at this point in the year to have one as big as it's done in the past. Like, we did a really big. Celebration in the past, but maybe we could at least. Do like the parade and maybe something smaller.
Mike. I completely agree, and the size of what we have would depend on. Who can, um, if. If we get fifty people to volunteer and divvy things up fifty ways.
Yeah.
That's a lot that can get done if. We have a committee of two.
It's gonna be those two people walking down the street.
So perhaps. Um.
Do we advertise that we're looking for help?
I think we put, put it out there and advertise. How, how did we determine who can call, uh. Community. Events Committee. Meeting. Does that have to be the members of the?
Have to look at your Bible. I mean, as far as the parade aspect of it, I mean. With a couple of volunteers calling people and coordinating with, say, somebody from. Emergency services, since they have contacts with, you know, like, emergency services and, you know, whatever, uh, originally. Uh. Chip had volunteered to coordinate the parade aspect of it, but obviously he's no longer with us, so. Um. I think it would be realistic to say you could have a parade, you just need the right people to step in and want to call the peo- call people and.
Like, maybe he'd still, maybe he'd still want to put it together, I don't know, but, so I guess where my thought is, is that if we could. Have a, have a meeting. And. Publicize it. And. Put it out there to anybody who would like to help. Pull Community Day together, whether you want to be on the committee. Or you just want to help. Come to this meeting, and we'll see how many people show up, who can commit to what, because as much as I would love Community Day. This board. I don't think has the time to adequately plan it, so it, it all comes down to how many people.
Yeah.
Want to come in and. Whatever part they do, however big or small.
Should we do like a little? Like, invite folks on for our meeting on the eighteenth?
Yes.
It's a good idea.
I did a minimum invite to community, is that committee members and babies, brainstorm, what's?
Right.
What we're looking at, and then give them the opportunity to then. Call meeting while they're here, if they want to, um. I, I think that would be a good start. Yeah, I think Cory's got a question as well. Yes, Cory?
How many positions are taken and how many are open on that board?
It's seven. I think it's, it's a seven-member committee. And there's only two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Since I raised my hand, I've had two DMs saying, if you're gonna join the committee, I'll join the committee. Uh, so. Um, so I mean, I. I, I would venture to say that I would be willing to help facilitate that. At this point, I don't know if I could commit a total time to being. On the board, but I would definitely help with some facilitation if needed be.
But I, I think that. You know, we could, we could have fifty people come and say, I want to work on Community Day. We don't have fifty spots for the Community Day Committee. And hopefully some of those fifty people showed up would want to be on that committee to do things, because the Community Activities Committee is about. Community activities throughout the year.
Right.
But as far as Community Day. The, my thought is the more people who want to come and. Volunteer to make this happen.
Yep.
But then the members of the Community Activities Committee would be responsible for coordinating.
I know.
Volunteers and the activities.
Makes sense to me.
So are you looking to have like? A workshop at the beginning?
You think, you think that would work?
Yeah.
Yeah, workshop before our next meeting? Say five thirty on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Sorry, Penny, hang on. One second.
Sort of motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have a workshop.
The committee. Must have volunteered.
Yeah, we'll publicize it, a workshop for the Community Day Committee and. And on five thirty, at five thirty on the eighteenth for our next schedule, select board meeting.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Penny?
So the committee consists of seven, but no less than three, so three or acceptable. Then section six says they can form their own subcommittee. The following list shall constitute a listed standing subcommittees for the parade festivities of fundraiser. By majority vote, the committee. May constitute any additional subcommittees on the interim, the committee membership may include volunteer. However, one should be. One person from the committee should be overseeing each subcommittee that they start.
So. I will specifically. Reach out to the members.
Thank you.
Of the. Community Act. Activities Committee. Um. And then I would just say the more we can publicize. And even if, my thought is, for anybody who's listening. Even if for whatever reason you can't physically participate in planning or attending, if you have thoughts or ideas or. Memories from the past to share, please attend the meeting and, and. Share that information.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
And I was, I would add to that, that it. I think it's important to let people know that they could just show up for two hours. On the day and do a, a small thing. You don't have to be on the committee to be a volunteer. And, and I think that'll bring more people in, I think that some of the hesitancy is the commitment. To an ongoing, weird, long committee, so call for volunteers, small jobs to little jobs.
Yeah.
I think people will come, do it, and people come.
Any help we can get, that's right.
So it's function on rec.
Alright. Any further discussion? Oh, shoot. I made the motion.
I second the motion.
There we go.
Thank you. So this is for a workshop. Before the next, at five thirty on the eighteenth.
Correct.
Maybe, and the whole.
Yes.
Driving me to.
All in favor, Bob, I?
Mike, I.
Heather, I.
I.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll have an application for rec, instead of, I think mine expired on Friday.
Oh.
Well, I think that was all my others.
That's it, okay.
If I think of something else, I'll restart.
Alright.
Thank you.
Now, have Vivian. Provided us with a hexed list of questions, which I greatly appreciate. And we're gonna have some time to go over them. Go ahead, Viv.
I just wanted to say. I didn't mean to make anybody look bad by asking questions last time, but I distinctly heard that you wanted questions in writing. My car was wrote down for a weekend in Henry. But I didn't wish to give the library. And type these two questions, make copies. Because I'm still learning the computer, but I'm working on it. So I don't expect these. Two questions to be answered tonight. But, um. Could they be on the agenda for, for next, in two weeks, and then next week?
Yeah.
Isn't it?
Okay. Mike, I, she gave me a copy of her questions, they're in your box.
Good. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did you remove a couple of questions? Cause it says one, three, five. There's no two and four.
Oh, no, it's there, but I was trying to say.
In the middle of.
Oh, nevermind, I found it.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I tried this, and I'm not a, a typer.
No, that's good, I see it now, okay.
And then the library was closing, I ran out of time, so I had to write, can't write the last two. Yeah, I would appreciate it, cause I'm.
And just for people who are out there who can't see this, your two questions are fourteen questions. So that's why it's not as simple, I mean.
True, because I don't, um.
And which is, it, it's totally fine. But that's why we're. Going to work on this and. Address it at the next meeting, because this is pretty comprehensive.
Right, because, um, that's the way my mind works. So one question is about the ARPA, um, the ARPA money, and then, then the second one is about remote participation policy.
Mm-hmm.
And within that. It's multi-layered, I didn't know how to. Ask a singular question, because it really does involve. Multi-layered questions, so you end up total, what did you say? I never counted those.
Let's just say several, no, it's just really clear and easy to follow.
Okay.
And we thank you. And we thank you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna. Good job.
Thank you.
Most of this I could probably answer, but.
Alright. Well, that way we should publish the questions, right, on, you know, sometimes it's just easier to see it in writing instead of. Right, yeah, and in the moment, it's difficult.
And, oh, and it was good for me too, just, um. This time of the day, after being up to twenty-five, three, four, thirty, five, you know, like. I know I stumbled over my burden, I know that I'm not very clear at this kind of a day, so writing it sort of being a bit clearer.
No, this is wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're, we're actually well into our public comment period, if anybody has any. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about that tonight's meeting, and it has to do with the items from the process, and. Um. I don't know if it was a mistake why I'm raising it again. But not some type of thing, where did the releasing of the. The old, old, the previous town. Trailer roll, because it was on last week's table items, but it is not on. Tonight's in-progress items. Would that make sense?
I'll take that one. Yes, please.
So several meetings ago, this question was posed, I believe, by you and maybe Penny. And we had the certificate here, and they signed off on it, so she was released, and I forgot to remove it from the list, so that was my error.
Thank you. That's, she's, surprise, another one.
I don't have a problem doing the easy one.
It's all good, I just didn't know the whole stake.
It was.
Thank you.
Any other public comments or other business? Oh, yes.
Thank you. This way.
Alright, so I guess we'll. Take a motion to adjourn.
Almost.
And will be adjourned at. Seven forty. Thank you, everyone.
I go.
Thanks, Mike.
Good night.